Okay, at this point we'll reconvene the City of Manasha Common Council meeting. We are at ordinances and resolutions number two. So at this point I would accept a motion regarding resolution four.
Oh, there already was? Okay, apparently. Okay, there was a motion on the floor for resolution four by Alderman Nichols and Alderman Kruger. Is there discussion? Did we lose Randy? Oh, no, you're just... Okay, I just can't quite see you. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion secured, and we'll call eight zero.
Okay, item three is resolution five. Do we have a motion at this time? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of resolution five nineteen, a resolution terminating City of Manasha Tax Increment District number five, authorizing city treasurer to distribute excess increment to overlying taxing districts, and approving the distribution of remainder funds from TID number five closure to Strong Neighborhoods Manasha Housing Program as recommended by the Administration Committee and introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Kruger. Alderman Sevanek.
Um, I...
Do you need the agenda or the...
My thing is both. Yeah, I think I got the... I don't need the agenda because it's right up there.
This, did you find a resolution?
Yeah, the resolution is right here. Okay, so we don't have a dollar amount in this resolution, correct?
There's an approximate amount. We will not know the final amount until the audit is complete.
Okay.
You could direct a portion of the remaining funds to one area and the remainder to another area if you so desire.
Okay, well, as I had stated earlier in the Administration Committee, I feel that the eight hundred and seventy-one thousand into this program is too high, and that I would recommend that two hundred thousand of the... that that amount be reduced by... would that be the more appropriate, reduce it by...
So I think the motion would be to direct two hundred thousand dollars of the remaining funds to...
The general fund.
Fund, okay, to the general fund.
For...
And the remainder to the Strong Neighborhoods Fund.
Right.
So that we have a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Discussion, do you have discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
It's going to go in order now. That's the only way I can do it. Alderman Grady?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I totally echo Alderman Sevanek's feelings about the TIF money and the amount of it being in this program, the eight hundred some thousand dollars. I'm leaning more towards half. You have a lot of people that have lived here a long time and have paid taxes, and I've always... Manasha's the highest tax. My... but you're not comparing apples to apples that way. And it's time for these TIFs to come to fruition like this one is, and start to reward the taxpayers that are currently on the tax roll, and develop some type of carrot or give them a kudos because, you know, Alderman Repella's district and some of mine, too. I mean, there's some high taxpayers in those areas, and to give them the satisfaction or the know that we're looking out for everyone here. So I would recommend more like half, but I don't know if that's... can be seconded or changed or whatever, but we'll just keep that open for debate.
So two questions, Director Jacobs. We will be seeing an amount going on the levy as of 2020 as well. Do you have that amount to... and we would be able to use that for either tax reduction or services depending on the will of the council when we set that budget?
Correct. I wanted to answer, to respond to Alderman Sevanek's question earlier. There is tax relief already built in, irregardless of all this fund balances left over. We do have the blessing of with the additional tax evaluation of ten point seven million, that's going to come back on the valuation, not only of the city, but also the school district, the county technical college. The school district will be the biggest benefactor of that, obviously. But that would provide... the city's share of that is a hundred and five thousand annually. So that would, with the closing of TIF District number five, you're adding ten point seven million dollars. It adds a hundred and five thousand, which is roughly ten cents off of the rate. So that would come off automatically that way. Then the bigger blessing with this one is there is exempt computer aid payment that we have verified over and over the last couple of weeks with the state. And with existing policy and that the Department of Revenue follows, that exempt computer aid falls, drops, or gets pulled from the TIF district, it gets dropped into this, the city's pocket. Not, does not have to be distributed between the county, the technical college, and the school district. So that five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is an amount that also gets added automatically annually unless something happens goofy with the state budget going forward here this summer. So you add the two together, you have the hundred and five for the annual taxes, you have the five hundred and sixty-eight for the exempt computer aid that actually is coming from TIF five. So that total combined will be six hundred and seventy-three thousand. That is additional tax dollars that is freed and available for the council to decide whatever you want to do with that. That could be considered for tax relief, paying down debt, or adding, you know, funding some other new program or something. So that is, that's one thing with the closure, what happens with that. Then with the amount of money that was proposed, what I had just thrown into my memo, it indicated, based on property ac... land acquisition, that can't, that could be very costly not knowing how many parcels that the city would be considering, how many community development department would be proposing to the council in the annual budget. It could be from thirty thousand to fifty thousand for each parcel. So I mean, I just put in there any... so if you're looking even in three hundred thousand dollars, that could be anywhere from six to ten parcels. That is a big, huge chunk of that eight hundred and seventy-six thousand that we have kind of talked about with the creation of the program. So, I mean, when I think about the creation of the budget, the Community Development Department will be proposing on an annual basis to the council, this amount would be for this many parcels for land acquisition, and then the other allotment could be for grants, loans, paint restore, lead programs, all the others. So, and the thing is, how many parcels could there be out there that might use up a huge amount of that amount of money over time? And how long do we envision this being the sum available for that program? And then at what point, when the money dries up, then are we going to try to funnel it through, you know, another TIF that might close and redirect more monies to, as additional seed money? Do we look for additional maybe future grants that the state might offer? There's a lot of different ways to do this. But I just kind of threw my memo out there, thinking just the land acquisition piece of that could be very, very costly not knowing how many parcels there could be that we might want to target or aim for. And it's not all going to be done in one year, of course. This is over a period of years. So you'd see a real allotment every year for maybe targeting this many parcels, and then this many quantity for all the different other parts of this program that would be available to the taxpayers and the residents.
Would you guys yield to me so I can reply?
Yes. Yeah.
I need everyone to turn their light off because I didn't take the iPad back.
And that's, like Alderman Langdon sidebarred here, thought maybe it should be a little higher, too. And that's why I thought what, after what John just said, that's why I kept it to two hundred and not more. I understand where Alderman Grady's coming from. You know, I, I think in some ways that's a very good idea, but I think that if, if we do that, this program would possibly fail. So I think the two hundred is a fair balance, and because we do have, like John explained, we do have additional tax relief coming from that. Thank you for yielding, guys.
So I did want to give Director Schrader a chance to comment a little bit about what's... what do we need to make this program successful dollar-wise?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate that, and I greatly respect all the kind of the voices that have been opinionated here. What we really want to do with this program is be that, that massive change. Be that change that Manasha could never get over. And I would strongly encourage and recommend that the common council does not cut any funds from this program, truly. Again, as John had noted, part of this program isn't just putting paint on your house. It's not just, you know, converting single-family homes. That can be very costly. Part of this is also a tool for, for our common council to take those problem properties down. You look at this past year, we've, we've had several, you know, former drug houses, heroin houses that have gotten to that point that, you know, they are eating up police calls and, and, you know, potentially dangerous to the community, and, and that just, that sticks with that. To have a potential funding source to go after those is also a major portion of this, of this project. If we, if we cut that eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars by two hundred thousand dollars to six hundred and seventy-six thousand roughly, we're looking at maybe three years of that program. Maybe three years. I don't think we have another TIF that could come in that, that timeframe to replenish this district. And that is kind of why we, we structured it to hopefully get out to that four or five years. One, that, that puts, that puts Manasha in a, in a program and that, that gets enough hype with the entire Fox Cities that, that Manasha is doing things that no other community is doing to get people to live here, come here, and be a part of our community. And the last thing we want to do with that is to create that vibe, get, get everyone excited about that, such as the, the lead grant program where the funds ran out, and then no longer have funds to continue this program. So again, the amount, while we do see it as large, it will be budgeted on an annual basis, that we will take that right back to this common council for their consideration. And we can see how that program operates, and maybe there are tweaks that need to go along with it. But I, again, I would strongly encourage that, that none of the funds be taken from this program so that we, as a community and as a council, can be that change that Manasha needs for our housing stock. We've talked about it for, for years, much longer than I'm sure than I've been here, and we have the capability of doing that. And I would, again, strongly encourage this full amount to stay in so we can make that difference. Get out four or five years, get hype in this program, and then potentially, if needed, there, there is assistance in that realm to refill this fund or potentially rework that program. But again, a large portion of this program, as John noted in the memo, is also the city council's tool to actually acquire those properties, you know, similar to us actually acquiring the Bryn property. That, that property, we will, we will get it developed, but if it, I promise you that if we didn't take on that, that step, it would sit vacant like the Gilbert property for, for many, many more years than it is going to take us to get a developer in there. So again, I completely respect how this, this outcome is tonight, and we will move forward accordingly. But I would strongly recommend, from a community development standpoint, that this full fund remains in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to sort of echo some of the stuff that Sam just said. The housing stock, again, has been an issue at every debate I've ever been to, at every election I've ever paid attention to. The housing stock has always been a concern. And the residents aren't stupid. They know that the, the condition of housing stock affects their taxes, affects their values, the whole nine yards. And we actually have an opportunity to be able to address this for once. And it's, and it's a great opportunity. And now I understand that there's some, some part of the communities or some districts out there are, are in a lot better shape. But you have to trust me when I sit there and say, you visit any of the cities that have issues, when you have outlined areas with nice houses and all that, and, and the, and the lower quality housing, the lower housing, the smaller housing, those areas get ignored. Over time, it's going to cost a hell of a lot more to try to bring those back up and into shape. And sometimes it doesn't even happen. Sometimes those areas just go downhill to the point that you can't turn them around. We have an opportunity, a very good opportunity, to try to turn this stuff around right now. We, we have the, we have the funds for it. I mean, I understand wanting to, for the tax relief, but, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but if we take for, say, two hundred dollars of this, that's basically just a one-year relief. We, if we take it, have a tax relief, it's going to be one year, and that's going to have to be made up in the budget at some time again either. But the main thing is that we, we did this, and it's a concern. It's a concern though with the whole city. Everybody's been... everybody knows that we have to deal with the housing stock, and I do believe that this is the perfect opportunity to be able to do it. And again, if, if we ignore it or we don't do it right, it's just going to cost more in the long run, or possibly get to the point where you can't even deal with it because we're never going to have the money to deal with it at all. We have the money now, and it's, it's a good plan to be able to do it. And I say let's just keep on track and try to get this done.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor.
I can't turn you back on once you turn yourself off.
All right, thank you very much, Alderman.
Well, now, now Stan's in line, sorry.
Go ahead, Randy. Okay. John, you and I must have been thinking about some of the same things about the TIF. When is the next TIF coming due or going to be due?
We have them scheduled like every two to three years.
Okay.
Now, the next big one, obviously, is the festival is TIF nine of the Onidale Stupree Corridor. That, I don't think we have that one planned until somewhere between 2027 to 2029, so it's like another nine to 10 years out. That would be the big one with a lot of valuation there.
Okay.
This one did have a lot of valuation of only about 10 million, but it has that huge computer aid of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. All of our other TIF districts, it's a combined less than 20,000 dollars. So we're not getting a huge bonus with any of those closing with the computer aid being transferred from the TIF to the city. This is the big one for the computer aid. So it's not in the property taxes, it's in the computer aid payment that we get, assuming that the state budget continues to fully fund it going forward. It doesn't do something strange going forward in time.
So every TIF is not going to give us eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay.
No, it's just, this one has the big computer aid payment that would transfer to the city.
Understood, okay, thank you. All right. Then I'll go to Sam, and I understand Sam's idea that we want to have money in reserve to purchase some properties that we deem necessary to purchase. Do you have a, do you have like a, a list of your top 10 properties? Now, you don't have to share them, but a list of your top 10 properties that you're hoping to, to purchase in the next two to three years, and what that possible cost would be? Is that something that's in your...
Oftentimes, it's, it's not a list, it's an opportunity. And if you don't have those funds, when that opportunity arises, it, it just turns into that next landlord situation.
Okay.
And it continues that pattern of another 10 years of police calls and things of that nature.
Okay.
So while I don't have a list, there, there are a couple out there that we, we could look into acquiring at this moment. And I, one of the big things with that, again, is not just to acquire it, but it is to also work with another contractor to, to rehab that house or to infill that house. But again, without, without that funding mechanism to, to start that conversation, it, it hurts us just to let them pass.
Okay.
It truly does.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing. John mentioned something about the, the lead program. Could any of this eight hundred and seventy-six thousand be used to... I think the lead program's important to have for, I mean, we're, we're going to fix up some of the lower income housing, and a lower income housing is also suffering from the lead program as well. It's not, you know, it's not the newer houses that are hurting right now. Is there any way that we could slide, instead of giving that tax relief, I know it'd be a one-year type of tax relief for the homeowners of the city, but could we slide, would a hundred thousand dollars be a dent to fund some of those, the lead program and take it out of the eight hundred and seventy-six?
When we had this discussion, and Director McKinney had this discussion with the council some months ago before we adopted the budget, there was a, and along with the Manash Utilities, there was a commitment for the city to fund a program for 10 years, and the dollar amount that we were going to put in the budget was forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. We did that in the 2019 budget, and that was used with tax levy dollars. Now, so the question will be, how do we come up with the remaining nine years if we get all the 10 years fully funded? Where does the remaining nine years come from? Does it continue to be funded by the tax levy by everyone, or do we use some of this program money for this? This will not fully fund the entire remaining nine years, this, this allotment here. But then it needs to be shared with property acquisition, it needs to be shared with other parts of this program for grants and loans and things. So just in your back of the mind, to fund one year was roughly about 43,000 dollars. So this might provide us maybe a couple years of funding for that, but it will not fund the remaining nine years going forward.
Okay. So how are we planning to fund the rest of the 10 years you were talking about off of the tax levy or...
Well, right now, if there is another funding source, it would be the tax levy to fund this. You would not want to use your fund balance, the general fund, to do this.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Sam.
If I may address a portion of that question, so part of this program is obviously, obviously the major interior renovations. I, and, and I'm going to probably bite my tongue, but I believe over 80% of, of actual lead poisoning comes from paint and lead within the house, not necessarily the lead lateral. So again, this is tackling our lead issue. Obviously with, with, you know, Flint, Michigan, lead, lead and water gets a lot of discussion.
Sure.
But I will tell you that, that lead within the home itself, whether that be a windowsill or paint or whatever, is still very prominent in those older homes. And this, this will tackle that, and it will tackle it probably more directly than it will to, to replace that lead lateral.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Director McKinney, I think, wants to comment a bit on lead, and I have a question for Director Jacobs yet as well.
Just, just a comment on lead. The EPA estimates that to remediate, and you are correct, 80% is paint, 20% is, you know, laterals and other issues related to water. But it costs, according to the APA, anywhere from 9,000 to 13,000 per home to remediate hazards and get the correct contractors in to remove the lead paint and restore. So it is not, it's, it's an expensive endeavor for families.
Director Jacobs, could you talk a little bit, if we would take 200,000 dollars, one-time money, apply that to the levy, take that off the levy, what that does in 2021 with levy limits, and how that may affect us? Would we even be able to...
Point of view, Mayor, that is not my direction. My direction, give my opinion.
Sure. I, I can't turn your light on, unfortunately. I didn't realize we were going to talk this long.
I'm glad to ask that, anyway.
Oh, then we can, sure.
Yeah. My point is this, and I guess I'm going to go on saying I'm recognized, and that is, I'm not looking at just putting it on the levy. Let's start reducing our debt. I can't remember a number of times here that you've guys complained about our terrible debt. Well, here's a little sum. Hey, let, you, now we're getting off base, we're talking about all these programs, oh my God, we got to do this and this and this. This is a new program. You're adding something new to now. This is something more that we're adding to the, to the community as a service. Because we're not the answer to everything, okay? This, listen, if, we're at least doing something, and I think it's a lot more than a lot of other communities are doing. All I am asking is that I feel that the dollar amount that's being asked, in my opinion, is quite high, and it will get us through the next few years, and if it, and, and it's more than enough money for the next three or four years, okay? And if we have to, maybe this program doesn't work. So why are we throwing all this money at it? Let's have some, let's have some debt relief here first. I think this is an absolute fair compromise. I could have came in and did, you know, what, what Ted was asking to do, but I worked with staff, I talked to, to individuals, and, and I felt that this would be the fairest compromise, and yet have an outstanding program to address all the needs that you're talking about. But remember, this is now a new program that we're offering to the community. We haven't been doing these things, and that's why I'm in favor of it. Otherwise, I, I think we'd take the whole mountain, apply it to our debt. But I see the, the good that this can do. I could see that, how it can help our community, and, and as Alderman Kruger explained before, too, seemed like that was an issue always in the debates, what are you going to do about our housing stock in this community? I know that Alderman Tom Grady has issues with, you know, some of that also, too, especially with maybe even some of the businesses and that. And this all kind of works together. So I think this is a fair compromise. I think we should move forward, we should vote on this. And I know I, I've taken up most of the time on this debate, but I think we're getting off base. We're just worried about all these other things and how it's going to be funded, but that's different. This is about the Strong Neighborhood Program, a brand-new program, and I think the funding is more than adequate.
So that's a little different picture than I, what I thought you were trying to do. What I didn't want people to think was that next year we're going to take a hundred dollars off their taxes, and then the following year we're going to add it back on, because that would be very difficult with levy limits.
I'll talk about debt because I thought that's the only way you can...
So we could have, we could have put it in the debt service fund rather than the general fund, if you'd rather do that. But the general fund is fine, too.
The easiest way for you guys to deal with this.
Sure. Alderman Taylor? Whoops, I'm sorry, Alderman Grady is first.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Getting back, I too want to echo Alderman Kruger's points that he made about the program and, and the debates you hear and the things that go on in the city. Maybe I was being a little greedy with 400,000, and I'm more than happy with 200 if that's what we can agree with tonight, because it is a very good program, Sam, and I think we got to spruce up our neighborhoods and what we do have. And to echo what Director Jacobs said, if people start buying lots, moving in here, more monies being spent, and we get more money through our tax, taxes and stuff, and it'll help, it'll help the overall picture, too. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Sam, how is going to promote, you were saying how you want, you know, I appreciate everything you said, and how you want this to impact Manasha, and how we're going to let people know that throughout the Fox Cities that this program's here?
The intention of a part of the marketing fund of 1,500 was to actually go right to, right to the Realtors, go to a Realtor convention, have a Realtor convention ourselves. If you get the Realtors to sit in a room, listen to what this program has to offer, because they're the ones out selling Manasha, they truly are. They're, they're working with a property or a property owner that's maybe selling their house, they're looking for a new house. Okay, yeah, you can move into Nina and do that, or, and fix up that house, or you, you could move into Manasha and they offer this program, as long as you live there and put pride in your community for five years. So that's, that's one of the things that, again, we'll be kind of going right after the direct, or the Realtors, and we can also use that opportunity to educate those Realtors at that same token about our tax rate and what that tax rate has to offer.
Okay. And of course, as was mentioned earlier with code enforcement and things, is there any way that any of these dollars can be used to help shore, shore up that code enforcement? Is our, our residential building inspectors, are they allowed to do that with code enforcement? Seems like we got all our cards on one person, and I don't know if that's the best.
We certainly, every, every department takes their fair share of code enforcement. There's, there's a lot more code enforcement going around than, than probably what can be imagined just by driving through kind of your, your neighborhood. I can promise you that. But we certainly, last year had kicked off the, the property survey program and, and continued to do that. We actually, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, sat down and, and analyzed how we're going to make that program better this year, get better responses throughout this, this coming year. And obviously, having the paint and restore program fully functioning coming into this year, we, we do have that brochure that we put right into there and say, you know... year, we, we do have that brochure that we put right into there and say, you know, your, your house from a sidewalk survey or, or whatever does need to be fixed up, here's what Menasha's doing for you and we, we can throw that right in there. So, that's something that we'll be doing moving forward.
Because I, you know, earlier, I have to agree with a member of the public that spoke because code enforcement isn't working in her neighborhood and I would like to see, you know, that program work for everybody. And when you have an habitual violator, it just doesn't go anywhere, it just keeps going around. Talked to Greg Kyle, talked to David Bach, talked to Sam Schrader and...
Okay, we're getting way off-topic here.
I know, but it's part, it's part of this too, Mayor, and many other people got on lead lines and other things too, but I'm just talking about how this program is gonna work successfully for the community.
And our former Community Development Director and I had tried to purchase one of those problem properties that that person was talking about and she discouraged us from purchasing it. So, it kind of goes both ways.
Maybe we can have a workshop on something like that too, on, on how we might look at a better way to go after these properties. You know, our housing stock, it's hard to believe that our housing stock's coming up on well over a hundred years old in the community. And I really liked some of these graphs you gave us here that, you know, we're not at forty percent, we're at thirty-eight point five. The average considered to be a healthy racial force city is thirty-five percent. You know, that's, we're only three and a half percent off on that. That's, you know, it always seemed like everybody who's saying Menasha's got the most and according to these surveys, we don't. But we certainly have a very old ageant's stock of, of homes and I appreciate your, your department, I appreciate the mayor for years, going back to community development directors and Mayor, I've had many discussions on this and I know the mayor was looking at federal funding for this, he was looking at state funding for this and just about everything that's, that's in this. As I've talked with you about acquiring a home, when it gets to the point and you get that next flipper that jumps in front of us and, and then you just said, it's another ten-year scenario there that we struggle with this. And you look at the blocks where we tore down a cancerous home, seven hundred block of Taco Street, four hundred block of First Street, as soon as that home's gone, boom, that whole neighborhood's got new life to it. And it does really have that broken window effect when you have a home that, that has, that takes the whole block down with it. So, I think it's a fantastic program, it's, it's talked about everything I've talked about the last fifteen years, department heads to the mayor. And I'm really encouraged by, that we can implement this and, and it is really a time for this program with the housing stock getting well over a hundred twenty years old in the older neighborhoods where you show on your map it's sixty-five percent. And those neighborhoods really need, when you have sixty-five percent rental, you really do need kind of a, a portion. Rock to Block has been doing a great job for the city and we always try to make tip districts to make our city better. This is somehow where we're gonna work off of a tip district to make our older neighborhoods, which we couldn't find ways to help them. And it's just another tool, I guess, in the, and it's very creative, by the way, for us to tap some funds that I know the mayor's been looking at for years and years. So, hats off to the mayor and to your department for putting this together.
We'll keep turning stones to see if there's any other funds that we can add to this that are not necessarily city funds as time moves forward. Alderman Grady?
Well, I, I'm all in favor of this program and thanks for all the work you've done on it and I always shoot for the stars, so I think the more we can put into it, the better. And you realize that most of this old hu-housing stock is in our main corridors through our town, which all our visitors from point A to point B go through. And as James has commented about, just cleaning up some of the broken windows on Taco Street, but we've got one fourteen, the whole bit, oh, there's a lot of homes that I'm hoping that would take advantage of this to give Menasha a better outlook and that helps everyone, not just this district over here that has the high tax base, whatever, but most people don't even drive through that, go through our community. I just think this whole program could make our community look a lot better. Thank you.
So, what's on the floor right now is just an amendment to direct two hundred thousand dollars of the excess increment to the general fund. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, and since you reminded us, I'll stick to my comments about the amendment.
Then you can go on after we vote on the amendment.
All right. The, the proposed estimated amount is eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Last time we checked, the city of Menasha has over one billion dollars of equalized value. So, that leads me to question, what kind of impact would eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars have on one billion? It could be a lot, it might not be noticeable, but it's a start. To take away from that amount, I think, would be detrimental to the results and the possibilities.
Either way.
And I'll leave it at that.
Clerk is adding a little bit to the amendment just to clarify that two hundred would go to the general fund and the remainder would go to the Strong Neighborhoods Fund. It's already in the further resolved, but we're just gonna put it in what she's typing here. And it looks like, following that, we can take a roll call vote on it. This is just the amendment to, but, so basically what this does is it directs two hundred thousand dollars into the general fund and the remainder to the Strong Neighborhoods Fund. The resolution, the way it is, directs all of it to the Strong Neighborhoods Fund. So, this basically peels two hundred thousand off and puts it in the general fund. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the amendment? It's a tie. I will. I, I wanna vote to have the entire amount go in, now I'm confused, so I wanna vote against it. I will vote against it as well.
Motion feels under, roll call four or five, with the mayor voting.
Alderman Sevenix?
I, I can't emphasize enough, this is a new program. You are spending, you know what, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but do we need to take care of everybody in this community, their health insurance? Maybe we better put money towards that. Do we have to take care of their car repairs? Do we have to, you know, this is an, an, a bonus program, this is a social program added to our community, something unique. I just shared with Alderman Langdon an article that was in the, the paper from a neighboring community, a village of Winnicott, and they offer a thousand dollars and that's it. We're offering five times that amount. I think we are spenders, spenders, spenders. It is not our responsibility to take care of every Tom, Dick and Harry problem in this community. It, it, people need to take responsibility for themselves. We are offering here a, a small incentive for them to make changes, but to throw hundreds of thousands of dollars at it and not try to relieve any of our debt in this community is absolutely ridiculous. I'm gonna make another amendment then, if you can't live with two hundred thousand, then I'll make it a hundred and seventy-five thousand because we need to add tax relief because I don't wanna have anybody here or, or taking care of our debt, complaining about our debt. Listen, you have a city garage that's gonna cost us ten million dollars and we, we're, why isn't that before us now? Because we're having issues with that because of our debt situation. I wanna get our debt under control and you wanna keep spending more money on programs that are nice, there's a lot of programs that we could be offering, but I just think we need to take care of this community, we gotta take care of our debt. So, I'm gonna make an amendment that we offer one hundred and seven, that if you couldn't live with the two hundred, then I'm gonna say a hundred and seventy-five this time.
Do you wanna place that in the Debt Service Fund or the General Fund?
In the Debt Service Fund.
Okay. Is there a second? So, motion is second to place a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of excess increment in the Debt Service Fund and the remainder in the Strong Neighborhoods Fund?
Yes.
Is there any?
And that remainder could even be more. And we may have other grant opportunities and all kinds of other things. Let's take care of our, let's take care of our, our big problem in this community. We might not be able to build that city garage if we keep spending like this.
Is there further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please? In the, in the spirit of cooperation, I will vote for this. I think it's a good compromise. I do think that I would rather see the entire amount go into the program because I think changing a forty thousand dollar house into a hundred thousand dollar house reaps benefits for all of us. It, it happens actually quite often with some flippers, but I think that what's more important is that we move this program forward and I'm willing to compromise for that. So, right now, we have in front of us the motion as amended, which directs, I'm not sure what the dollar amount is. Well, the total dollar amount directs a portion to, to the Strong Neighborhoods Fund and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the Debt Service Fund. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna state my position clearly so everybody understands where I'm coming from on this program. I don't know how much, or how much traveling everybody gets to do, but there is a community, and I keep referring back to this, called East St. Louis, which used to be a high-middle-income community, they had a lot of glass factories and everything else in it, it was middle to upper-middle income. They lost the industry when all the glass manufacturers decided that it's better to go over to Saudi Arabia and where the sand was for it and that whole inner city absolutely collapsed. And instead of the government concentrating on trying to get more people interested in that community, all they did was try to satisfy the people who remained there and it fell in, into such disrepair that today, that the Parks Department only has enough money for the wages and maybe a couple of change for the swing sets and all that. That's the situation. Now, I know that that's East St. Louis and we may never end up going in that direction, but it's not a risk that I wanna take. And that's why I'm very, very strongly for this whole entire program. I've, I've, I do a lot of traveling throughout the Midwest, I see communities and I, and I see what happens to them when they start losing industry or when a certain section of the community starts going downhill and the city does not pay attention to that right away, it goes into such disrepair that you can't get out of it. And that's not a situation I wanna see this, this city in at all. So, I, that's why I was for the whole entire amount, but I, I lost that battle, but I, I hope that everybody supports this wholeheartedly from here on out. Thank you.
So, we have the motion as amended on the floor. Alderman Taylor, did you have a comment?
I just, I also wanted to clarify something like Alderman Kruger did. My wife and I, we pay attention to the Fox Cities, we drive around a lot through all the neighborhoods and I'll tell you, other communities think that they are above us, but they are far below us as far as their housing stock is getting worse and worse and worse. And we're getting better and better and better with the Rock to Block and our programs and this is only gonna push us up higher. A lot of cities, like Alderman Kruger talked about, are a lot older than us and a lot older than us, but when you say, where's the bad side of town? South side of Chicago, north side of Milwaukee? You always have that with the cities. We haven't had that yet with the Fox Cities. So, this just assures that we can be proud in the city, keep our housing stock up, keeps our rents a little higher and that everything doesn't fall down on us. And again, there's other cities that are surrounded by us that are far worse shape than us. So, I'm glad that we're taking the initiative here and putting this program together and to get ahead of everybody else. That's what we're doing with this.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, you guys keep doing that to me. Alderman Nichols?
That's because we don't know what order we'll be in.
If I would've known there was gonna be this much discussion, I would've taken that back, but...
This program benefits the entire city regardless of where you live. Thirty percent of your gross monthly income goes towards your mortgage, taxes and insurance and you qualify for this program. I encourage everyone to add up those expenses, compare it to your gross monthly income and see where you land. And I'm not just speaking to everyone here, I'm speaking to the public as well. It will benefit many, many people in the city. When we talk about redevelopment opportunities, Menasha is, we cannot grow out anymore, we have to grow from within. This is a way for us to do that. Maintaining and increasing property values helps everyone. It helps residents, it helps our entire city from east to west, north and south. And so, this is a way for us to take, to invest in our community, to invest in our people who live here and that's why I support it.
Is there anyone else now? Alderman Langdon?
You, Mayor. This was tough for me. I totally liked the program for the full amount, but on the other hand, I, after hearing Alderman Sevenix, to reasoning his debate, we had an alderman, a former alderman, Dan Zalinski, that for every, I don't know, what was the, let's just say he was on here ten years as an alderman. Every, once, every meeting that I was an alderman with him for good five years, five and a half years, every meeting, he would bring up the debt. We need to pay down the debt, we need to pay down the debt. Every meeting for years, that was his concern. And now, we are able to throw some money and I'm with Alderman Sevenix to put money, we have to bring our debt down. I think I hear more about the debt in this city than I do than our housing program, than our housing stock that's out there. As an alderman, I hear more about the debt, I hear more about the steam plant that's still brought up by everybody out there and they bring up the debt. We're in debt, the city is in debt. So, this was a hard decision for me to make my vote, but I made my vote. But I wanted to also say, Alderman Kruger, and this is why it was difficult for me to make this vote, was I, I call him a lot and I call him during the week a lot when he's on the road. And the first thing I say to him every single time is, where you at? And it's not because I don't care where he's at, it's because then I ask and he tells me and then I ask him, what's it like there? And so, this was difficult for me because I, I, I went with Alderman Kruger and I understand his position on this also, but I just wanted to make the reason why I made my vote, so thank you.
Think we got everyone? Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Hopefully, I don't have to vote this time.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Okay, seeing that there's no other members of the public here this evening, and we have no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.